Good evening. Today is Thursday, May 24th, 2018, and this is the High Park Central School District's Board of Education meeting. At this time, may I have a motion to enter executive session to discuss confidential matters pertaining to union contract negotiations, personnel, civil service status, and the superintendent's contract?
So moved.
Guys are killing me.
Second. Wasn't my idea.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you.
Don't you feel like the guy to hit the home line?
Okay. Thank you for being patient. We're ready to resume. At this time, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is unified by the United States of America and to the equality for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yikes, got my tongue tied there. Okay. Thank you. There are no modifications to the agenda, so may I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. That brings us to upcoming events. So, upcoming events. Wednesday, May 30th, 7:00 is the FDR Award Night. Always a nice thing to see the young people getting their scholarship awards and different items. That will be at FDR High School. Wednesday, June 6th, 7:00 PM is the FDR Middle School Concert in the Parks at the Vanderbilt Mansion. And Thursday, June 7th, is the next regular Board of Education meeting here at the district office. So let me just move down a little bit. And that brings us to Pride. We always start with the lovely Leah.
Okay. So the elections for my replacement have been all week, and I'm happy to say that Patrick Izzo will be the student representative on the board next year. I also have to correct myself. During my language presentation last week, I said, or three weeks ago, I said that Pine Plains offers elementary school languages, and I was misinformed on that. We had an awesome concert at the high school last night. I got to perform, and so did the chorus and band, and the seniors were recognized. Track sectionals were today, tennis was yesterday, and girls softball won Mahals in the past week.
Cool. Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, I saw from the paper today, it was delayed a day because it was one event not completed, but the boys won the Mahals in track and field, and the girls finished second.
Right.
And those events became official this morning, I guess, or last night.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I can have.
Well, it's concert season, so there was a concert at the middle school, which I attended. There was one at Ralph Smith that we weren't able to attend because we were at the Val Sal dinner down in Tarrytown. There was a North Park Elementary on Monday, which I attended. Vile Avenue was Tuesday night. Of course, I just mentioned Wednesday was FDR concert, which was actually an hour longer than normal, but it was a good hour. It was an hour where the students were recognized by the band director, the orchestra's director, the director of music. And I was impressed that each of those educators knew every one of those students, knew what they were like, knew what they did like and didn't like, and what they were good at. And I was, you know, my old hips were old, complaining, sitting there for two hours, but it was a very nice night. There was also a honors breakfast for Duchess County hosted by our Duchess County BOCs, and that was a very wonderful event. A lot of young people. I thought the Arlington Quartet of Cellos was out of this world. They were really good. So that's the concert season. You got anything else?
Well, just to add to a couple of the events, and you mentioned the Duchess County honors breakfast. We were pleased that this was the first ever Duchess County honors breakfast, and we certainly brought our valedictorian, Leah, and our salutatorian, Natalie Malloy. But we also had submitted a name for the keynote speaker, and it was Garrett Burnett. He was our very first board member, and he was selected as the keynote speaker. There was nice coverage in the Poughkeepsie Journal of Garrett giving his keynote. So it was great that not only did the event happen, but the very first event, we just thought it was special for us, and that Garrett was there and he got to sit at our table. Doug mentioned the Val Sal dinner, the valedictorian and salutatorian dinner down in Westchester. That is a regional dinner for Duchess County, Putnam County, Westchester County, and Brocklin County. That is all the top two students in all of those counties. There's about approximately 500 people in the room because you have sponsors and board presidents, superintendents, and high school principals. And out of that entire group, there are only about four awards, and Leah Straight was the recipient of the Technology Scholarship. So we were very proud that one of our own got one of the very few scholarships handed out at that dinner. Congratulations, Leah. Yes. I keep thinking we had something to do with it. Absolutely nothing to do with it. I attended the Scholar-Athlete Breakfast along with Tom Cunningham and Rick Partey, and that is always a very, another very prestigious event. This is a formula. It's our top athletes who also have very high averages. And in attendance for us was Josh Gross and Cindy Tomaszewski. I believe Sidney plays soccer and track. Josh is track and cross-country. So congratulations to them as well. Prior to the board meeting tonight, we had our tenure reception. It's a tradition that we started a couple of years ago, that on the night that they are awarded tenure, we invite them in for a little reception before the board meeting. We take tenure very seriously. We just told them how much of a process it is. If you would, we have two people here, our middle school French teacher, Andrea Welty, and
Andrea Welty is here, and Tanya Hall, teaching assistant, also came.
From Netherwood. So if you'd stand up for the cameras. They're on the agenda later. They don't have to stay, but, because you have to stay through the whole meeting for them to hear the vote, but if you want to, fine. We realized years ago that tenure was something that happened, and people weren't even aware of when, and, you know, it just happened at a board meeting, so we've turned it into a celebration. So we're very happy you could make it. That's it for Pride.
Lot going on.
And now we have a formal Pride. With that, we will ask Caitlin Wagner to come up with our avid students for their formal... Oh, I did tenure recognition. I didn't realize it was on there. I'm sorry. I'm out of order, but we'll be good.
That's usually me.
I know. I thought I could see it there. That's okay. We don't need to modify the agenda.
Well, good evening. I'm Kate Wagner. I'm a teacher at FDR, but I like to always say that I'm not just a teacher, I'm an avid teacher, so, which is like super special to me. We have some students that are going to talk to you tonight, but, and I'm so proud of them, so excuse me if I cry, but I want to tell you before they get to talk to you about some of their successes. We started this class 2014 in September with 20 students. We're down to 14. Every one of them is graduating on time. Their average GPA is an 82%. Normally, for a Regents diploma, it is 22 credits that need to be acquired before graduating. These guys, on an average, are coming, going out of school with 28. We have somebody that has 35, actually. A lot of these guys in the whole avid program have been very big into SGO and sports. I think if you name me any sport, they, someone in the avid program is in it, has been in it, has been on SGO in some way with every position on SGO. Some of the rigor courses that they've taken, for this class alone, have taken four honors classes, eight advanced placement classes, and 14 Duchess classes. So that's a total of 42 credits that these guys are walking out of high school with going into college. We applied collectively for 50 colleges and universities. They were accepted to 43 of them. They collectively were offered $116,348 in scholarships. So a tremendous group for them. So I encourage you, before they come up here and speak, I encourage you to come out for the graduation. You'll see them in their graduation stalls. They're big and white, and you can't miss them, so I will let them do the talking, and then I'll come back.
And as the students start, I just wanted to say that avid stands for advancement via individual determination. It's a program that we, it's a national program, and it started for us about three or four years ago.
Five years ago.
Five. Wow.
Five. So this is my first class that I've seen all four years of high school.
Excellent.
So they're very dear to my heart.
So who would like to go first?
Okay. So I don't really know where to start, but I can just kind of explain avid and what it's meant to me.
Can you tell us your name?
My name is Brett.
Thank you, Brett.
So avid, for me, has been a really big help with, from where I was when I joined it to where I am now, about to graduate in a little less than a month. So in middle school, I wasn't really the best student. I misbehaved. I didn't have the best grades. I was kind of out of control. There was meetings constantly with my teachers and my parents. I was just not the student that any teacher would really want to have. And in eighth grade, I remember walking into my first period class, and there was a note on my desk that said, "Come down to guidance," or the assistant principals, I'm not sure, "that said, 'You have been selected to get into the avid program.'" And, well, there was a whole screening, meeting process, interviews, and things like that. And I went through the interview, and that was probably the only thing I took seriously my entire middle school experience, and I got put into the avid program. When I joined avid, I didn't really know what it was. They didn't really explain much, but I can just say that it has been the biggest help for me ever. I honestly don't think that I would be graduating high school right now without it. I don't think that I would have even passed my junior year of high school without it. The path that I was on was completely horrible. I didn't care about school. I didn't care about anything like that. And Ms. Wagner is really the first teacher that actually took an interest in me, not just the class in me alone, everyone in the class individually. It wasn't just, you know, "You're my class." It's "You are you, you are you. I take an interest in you and what you want to do and what you're doing." I had some faults here and there. I, you know, I didn't do the best in my classes, but I was doing a lot better than I was, and I was improving myself in everything that I was doing. I, you know, I joined BOCs, Duchess BOCs, in 11th grade, and that was a conflict with my schedule, so that I had to leave the avid program in 11th grade. 12th grade, I was allowed to rejoin. And it was more of like, you can see, if you look at, you know, my grades and things like that, 9th grade, 10th grade, I was, you know, high 80s average. I was doing well in all my classes. I was passing everything. Junior year, everything dropped off. Not only am I part for avid, it's also my fault, you know, I have to keep on track of my things myself, but it was just, as soon as I got back in, everything started clicking. This year has been so fast for me, and Ms. Wagner has been there all the way, keeping me on my toes, keeping me on my schoolwork, everything. I'm, you know, I just got my security license today through BOCs. I just secured that. You know, I've been on high honor roll all four semesters at BOCs this year, so it's just, everything has just been going better. I've been keeping up with my schoolwork. I have a DCC class that I'm taking, which is the first time I've ever been put in an advanced, like, higher class, and it's just, it's, avid has helped me with every step of the way.
Great.
Hi. My name is Tom Calamari, and I started the avid program four years ago when I entered FDR. I had the same similar experiences as Brett, but I wasn't like the worst student. I didn't go to the AP's office ever, but I didn't have, like, the grades that would say, like, for requirements to be in avid, but I had the maturity, and I was nice and kind, and I got into the program, and it has helped me in many ways, more ways than I care to mention. I feel grateful for the program and for Ms. Wagner. Both of them together have helped me through the last four years. It has got in me in places that I never dreamed of. Like, I got accepted to the Montserrat College of Art. Without them, I don't think I would be going there. I'd probably be going to Duchess. So this program, for me, has made me a stronger person, and I think it works. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Madison Slate. I was joined in the avid in eighth grade, just like all of them. Basically, avid for me, honestly, is like, basically second family, just because of, like, how close we all are. Like, I can say that I was just like Brett. I was a totally different person. I mean, I did good in school, it's just, but like avid just helped with organization, just the way they planned things out and other stuff like that. Ms. Wagner, she is kind of like a second mom to me. She's always there for me when I need her. You can just go to her whenever. She's kind of like a second guidance counselor, just basically there whenever you need her. I can definitely say that I've gotten into, I'm going to Mercy College to study Vet Tech and pre-med, so it's all basically based on avid because she helped us apply to multiple colleges with Common App, because I feel like if I wasn't in avid, I wouldn't have no clue what I was doing, because they, she just helps us explain it and all that other stuff. Basically, throughout the, all four years, I've just gotten better with organization, and I'm now in DCC classes and AP courses just because of it. I can, all I basically have to say is that Ms. Wagner is kind of a mentor to me, and she means a lot to me, and so does the avid family, just because we're all so close. Not one of us is, like, distant or anything, and that's basically it.
Hi. I'm Kimberly Ocampo, and when I first came to the avid program four years ago, I had no idea what it would do for me, but it's helped me so much. Like, anyone who knows me knows I was very quiet freshman year. I did not talk at all, but now I'm very, like, outgoing and more confident, and without avid, like, I would never be like the treasure of the senior class right now. And it's helped me so much. Like Ms. Wagner, she's like a mentor. She's like a, like avid is a home base for me, and it's the second family, like Madison said. And it's like, anyone in that class is always, like, they're there to help you and help you grow and achieve your goals. And I know, like, while I'm going to Duchess on my pre-law track, and without avid, like, it's just, it's helped me a lot, and the process, like, it helps you prepare for college. And Ms. Wagner is just, like, very helpful. She's always there. She's there to help you succeed, and will be there to keep you on track, and, yeah. That's basically it.
Hi. My name is Charlie, and when I first joined avid, like, in freshman year, I didn't really know what it was going to be. I didn't know, like, what it was. Well, when they first introduced it to us, I thought, you know, I thought it was like a great, I don't know, option, I guess, because, like, they were like, they kept talking about, like, how we would go on, like, college visits and help us, like, throughout high school. So, like, I wanted to, like, be in the program, like, really wanted to be in it. So, like, you know, so as, like, as the years went by in high school, it has really helped me, you know, like, develop myself as, like, as a student and as a person. It, like, helped me, I don't know, be, like, hardworking in, uh, in school, basically. Even though I'm still not the best student, you know, I can't imagine myself, like, where I am right now. Sorry, I'm kind of nervous.
Very good. Thank you.
But, um, thanks.
Hi. My name is Naomi, and everybody's basically said everything about avid, so I don't know what to say.
What are your plans, Naomi?
I'm going to the Culinary Institute of America.
Wow.
So without Wagner, I probably wouldn't have gotten in, like. Since I've been in avid, I've been more geared towards going to college before. I didn't know what I wanted to do, or if I was going to go to college or what. I was, like everybody, like, most of us, bad grades, we weren't very motivated, you know? So since we've been in avid, I've been more organized, I've taken more pride in my work, I've tried a little bit, like, I've tried harder, and I've gotten better grades, and now I'll be, I'll be graduating with, my GPA will be 3.0, which I'm very proud of. I didn't expect to get this far. I don't know. I mean, like, this year, I've been a little, I've been slacking a little bit, but I've been getting, Wagner's been on my butt about it, so, yeah.
Great. Thank you.
So you can, you can see why they're so wonderful, but let me tell you more about them, who's not here, who couldn't come because of conflicts, and where they're going to school. So Naomi Anderson, she's going to Culinary Institute for baking and pastry, and she's the first in her family to graduate high school. There's Mike Baird. He's going to Duchess for business. He'd like to be a small business owner. There's Thomas Baker. He's also going to Duchess for exercise science to become a PE teacher. There's Brett Benaway behind me. He's going for criminal justice at Duchess, and he will be the first to graduate college in his family. Matt Burkhardt is going to Duchess for film communications. He'd like to do some type of editing in film. Thomas Calamari behind me is going to Montserrat College of Art for illustration. Amani Clark is going to Corning Community College to play basketball. He will also be studying sports management. Charlie Hernandez, who's here, is going to Duchess for criminal justice. He is the first in his family to graduate high school. Haley Moretti is going to Duchess for criminal justice and a minor in psychology. Kim Ocampo, who's right here, Duchess for criminal justice for pre-law. We have Camille Rando, also going to the Culinary Institute of America, and she is majoring in culinary arts for business and minoring in hospitality management. She is the first in her family to graduate high school. There's Karice Rudolph going to Mercy for pre-vetinary studies. She's the first in her, the first in her family to go to college. There's Madison right here. Madison Slate going to Mercy for veterinary tech and pre-vet studies. And then the last but least, we have Tyler Van Steenburgh going to Duchess for exercise studies to become a PE teacher. So thank you very much for hearing us.
Congratulations to Caitlin as a teacher, and congratulations to all the students. Good luck. You can't take, I keep calling her Caitlin, can't take Ms. Wagner with you physically, but please take her with you in your hearts and in your decisions. She's done a tremendous job, but you've done a tremendous job, so best wishes. Come back and visit us, and let us know how you're doing.
Okay. Though, we're going to skip over 10 years since she kind of did that. All right. Superintendent's report.
Okay. I have a couple. A follow-up to the Board of Education. We had had an ad hoc committee for health and wellness, and then it was determined that the decision on the question of a guest speaker from Planned Parenthood in the health classes resided, as per our handbook, with the high school principal. So together, Mr. Partey and I reviewed the committee materials, and as per, you know, the faculty handbook, the decision does reside with the building principal to weigh in on guest speakers. The following, it's easiest to read the message that was sent to the health teacher today and will be sent to the ad hoc committee tomorrow, that we were, we, meaning myself and Mr. Partey, were in receipt of the request to invite Planned Parenthood as a guest speaker during health classes. After much consideration, the request was denied, is denied. As the health curriculum in question is mandated by the state education department, we want to ensure that all students have access to the instruction, and that delivery of the instruction from a guest speaker does not create the potential for placing students in the position of revealing approval or disapproval of their organization. Multiple community resources on the life cycle and sexual health should be and are included in lesson planning and delivery. One suggestion for an alternative guest speaker on the topic of life cycle, sexual health, is our school physician and/or our nurse practitioner. The decision was, the decision does not indicate a social or political opinion on the Planned Parenthood organization. All of the content in the health class will be delivered. It was delivered before. It'll continue to be delivered. There's no change in the content. It's just the guest speaker aspect of it, and we are encouraging that materials, as per their curriculum, whether it's from Planned Parenthood or other organizations, is available during classes.
Okay.
We also have the Field of Honor this weekend. The High Park Education Foundation is hosting the Field of Honor. That will be Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. You can just go for fun and see the visual beauty of having 250 flags that are on an eight-foot post that are three foot by five foot on the field in front of the FDR estate. You could also purchase a flag in memory or in honor of someone. There are events throughout the weekend. For example, there is a Blue Shell Jazz Band, FDR High School students, at 11:00 AM on Saturday. The New York State Theater Organ Society will be doing a performance at 2:00. I'm trying to find the, the, there's a High Park medley on Monday at 12:30 under the direction of Lori Wooliver, a retired music teacher. A lot of students from as far away as Las Vegas who used to perform in some of our musicals are coming back, and they will perform a series of medleys from some of the FDR musicals. So lots of events all weekend long, so we encourage people to come out and support the High Park Education Foundation.
Quick question. That medley, where is that going to be, where's that being held?
Right, right before you get to the flags. There'll be a little stage.
All right.
Opening ceremonies are Saturday at 10:00, and closing ceremonies are at 1:30 on Monday. We're going to talk, wait till we talk about the vote. I was going to say, next step on Uh, opening ceremonies are Saturday at 10:00, and closing ceremonies are at 1:30 on Monday. Uh, we're gonna talk, uh, wait till we talk about the vote, I was gonna say, uh, next step on Capitol Project, but we'll do the vote results first.
Okay, yeah. You written that down for us?
Yeah.
Well, go right ahead.
Sure.
Votes next.
Okay. Uh, we wanna thank our voters who turned out. Uh, the results of the vote were that all three of our propositions passed. Um, we had two open boards, Board of Education seats. Mr. Perry Sheldon, uh, ran again for another term and was, uh, elected, and Mr. Carl Tomac, who's with us here in the audience, was also voted in as a new board member, so, welcome, Carl, thank you for being here. Um, we had a number of absentee ballots, and we were thrilled, Jay was in communication with Erin Heine, a former graduate, and she was the furthest that we know away, she was in Spain, and contacted Jay long in advance to get an absentee ballot, so as far as we know, that was the furthest away somebody voted. Um, our results are posted, uh, in this board agenda, um, I don't think I need to run through them, all three, uh, projects were, had, received a positive vote. The first proposition was the general operating budget, the second proposition was our Capitol Project, uh, replacing our science labs at Havlin Middle School and FDR High School. Our hashtag was that all our science labs predate man landing on the moon, so it was definitely time, and we're thrilled that, uh, the voters supported that. We also needed to, need to replace the heating and ventilation systems in all of our schools, but we're chipping away at completing Havlin Middle School. Uh, this project will encompass the heating and ventilation at FDR, as well as at North Park. Um, what happens now that there was a positive vote on the Capitol Project, the architects and engineers roll up their sleeves, they actually design the project, the, uh, to get to proposal, they design enough to, um, uh, put it together and get a, get a, a ballpark pricing, but now the real design, uh, work that goes to State Education Department begins, that takes, um, usually about six months, um, four to six months, for the final designs to be drafted and sent to State Ed. Unfortunately, State Ed, uh, is where the real lag occurs, anywhere from eight months, six to eight to 12 months, uh, for approval from State Ed. I will be asking the Board to work with the New York State School Boards Association. Um, the State Education Department, uh, found a way to shorten the time period for project approval, and they went through a long process of vetting architectural and engineering firms that they could, um, farm out some of the work for a fee, and if you were willing to participate in that, um, you could actually, uh, have your queue shortened. Um, what I'm hearing is that as the firms that they approved to do the review, after they do the review, instead of State Ed saying to the firm that they hired to do the review that, okay, this is how we're shortening the line, uh, they're reviewing it again. And I am going to request that we work together to, um, and with the New York State School Boards Association, first, I wanna verify, um, I, I need to get a, you know, something tangible, that, that that is indeed what's happening. Um, I've heard it directly from one of the vendors that's involved, but I'll get something tangible, and, uh, if that is indeed the case, I'd like to work through the Board with the New York State School Boards Association to shed a little light on that and talk about if the goal was to do something to shorten the line, it should shorten the line, not lengthen the line, so, um, more on that.
Okay, I'd like to say one thing about the vote. Uh, first of all, for all of you out there who voted, whether you voted for or against, thank you for voting. Um, 10% of the eligible voters in Hyde Park voted. That's 2% higher than the state average of 8%. Since the tax cap, the number of people voting has decreased by 33%. I think this is shameful, to tell you the truth. So, if you voted, thanks. If you're watching this and you haven't voted, please step up and do your civic duty, it's, it's, uh, it would, it would, I think government would run better if everybody paid attention and voted, so, not for the sermon, sorry. Alright, okay, any other comments? Now, that brings us to the DUCY.
Thank you. So, we have with us our Duchess County Superintendent, Dr. Hurley, and Sheri from, the Assistant Superintendent for Business. I hope I got that title right, Doctor.
Great, thank you, and, um, I know these are busy meetings, lots of fun, though, to see your student recognition, and we appreciate you fitting us in, uh, in this busy, very busy agenda. So, as Greer suggested, I'm joined by, um, Dr. Sheri Wesley, but also someone who I think you know, Mr. Jason Schwartz, who is from BPD, and they are our financial advisors, and indeed, for this bond, they will be the financial advisors for all of the school districts, so that this works for everybody. It's kind of a collaborative thing. And I'm also so happy that you all are well-versed in, in bond projects, I won't have to explain all of the next steps. And we are at the very initial stages, and it is our pleasure tonight to just go over some of that, those first steps with you, um, and be here to answer some questions and have Jason, um, share what it'll look like financially. So, I'm ready with my clicker. Should I just do it?
There, it's magic.
Great, magic. So, um...
Maybe we should give you a raise.
It's okay, I'm capped, I can't do that. Uh, I never miss an opportunity to share that. So, basically, this project, we're very excited about it, it, it is designed and planned to improve educational programs for our students, which are your students, and to reduce costs. So, this is the, um, extent of the project, basically, is to consolidate on our Salt Point campus, um, our three major educational programs. We're looking at approximately $36.8 million, and it is the first bond project that the DUCY has tried to pass, or has done, in more than 50 years. So, our facilities and infrastructure are inadequate and quite dated. We have concerns about campus safety and security at the, um, Route 4455 campus, which is really a business park, where we house our, um, special and alternative high school. We are concerned for you and for ourselves about escalating rental costs. We have some appropriate, we have spaces that are not appropriate for our high school students and our, even our Salt Point Center, in terms of cafeteria and gymnasium, and we need to look at more flexible space as we look forward to the future of technical education, um, at CTI. So, I think I've skipped one. Let's try this again. So, this is an example of a student who eats at her desk. If you can think of our Salt Point Center students, probably they would profit from the socialization of going through a cafeteria line like students in general education, but that's not an option for us. This is a class of our, um, Small Engine Repair, and you can see that the classroom is part of the lab, which isn't such a terrible thing, but if you're trying to update technology, it's not good for computers and things like that to be in a dusty, sandy, gritty, um, lab. And I think, and this is our beta site, and to the right, goes too fast, I'm gonna try to bring that back, to the right of that building, um, is the, um, flea market. So, every Sunday, when they have the flea market at our beta site, then on Monday morning, when we arrive, we get to pick up the parking lot, so we can all park in our appropriate spaces. But that building, um, we have been in for more than 25 years as a lease, and even though I'm, I'm sure a bond is a, a big consideration for you and for us, at least at some point, you finish paying for it, and you don't have the escalating rental cost that we've experienced over there. So, benefits in supporting the instructional program, um, we're able to target programs and reduce outside placement. So, for those of you that know about autistic programs, there's, there are different ways to meet the needs of those students. There is a, a, um, program that has to do with eating food, because sometimes they are sensitive to tex, these students are sensitive to textures. That's something we could probably do with some updates to our cafeteria and classroom facilities. Because we will have in this plan, um, more appropriate classrooms, we can share those between the CTI and the, um, special and alternative high school, including cafeteria and things like that. Flexible spaces for technology, some, some boards have said, well, Richard, what new programs are you gonna offer? The fact is, we were just at the, um, 2030 Summit, listening to Bill Daggett, and the point is, as good as we are, we don't know what's gonna be important 20 years from now, but we have to have classroom space and lab space that can be modular or changed, or meet the needs of those future courses. You know, I could, I could come up with some things that we might offer, but I don't wanna say that, and then that really not be the case, um, 10 years from now. Um, so, addition, additional instructional programs, um, our Adult Learning Institute Ally services all adults in Duchess County, and many of those classes are taught at the CTI, Career and Technical Institute. So, when we upgrade those labs and those flexible classroom spaces, we are, in fact, benefiting the entire adult community of the county. Security, as you can imagine, this day and time is a big deal, and trying to secure, um, the alternative and special, special and alternative high school is, is just ridiculous. But if you've ever come to DUCY, you know there's one entrance, so it is relatively easy to manage who's coming in and who's going out. And then, even though we have many students with IEPs, our ADA access is, is rather limited, it's not gonna be fixed in one bond project, but this will certainly go some distance to improving our, um, ADA compliance and access. Here's a, here's a picture of one of our welding labs, um, used by Ally and our students. This is just a picture of a sink, after 50 years of, of no bond projects, not a big deal, but, you know, these things, students are, are kinda tough on materials. Um, so, benefits, now we're gonna talk a little bit about fiscal responsibility. So, we've talked about lease costs, these are historically low interest rates, um, they don't, they're not as low as they once were, but for those of us that bought our first house at 13.5%, this is a very attractive interest rate. Transportation costs, we transport kids from Beta to our campus, and some school districts send two buses, one to Beta and one to our campus. And if we're transporting your students, then that's a cost that's added on to, um, your bill from DUCY. So, we think having everybody on one campus will create some efficiencies. Um, there are also duplicate courses, for example, um, in our special and alternative high school, we offer a high school equivalency, this is known in its former life as GED. We also do that at our, um, Career and Tech Institute. We could offer one or two classes right there and use some of the teachers, um, in the alternative and, uh, the special and alternative high school to, um, staff some of those, so we'd have some efficiency in terms of the number of kids we can serve and the number of classes we offer. So, we're here tonight about initial decisions. The board vote is important to determining how we finance this. The public will actually approve this project, certainly you will be part of that, but boards have to help us make some decisions in the short term to figure out how we pay for this and how we can save, um, costs in the financing. So, the one thing we're here really to talk about is the intermunicipal agreement. This offers you broad flexibility and autonomy in the financing, it offers lower interest rates and fees, and if we get a unanimous approval from the 13 school districts in Duchess County, we will save a boatload of money. You will save that money, and it will lower the cost of the bond, and that's really what we're here to share with you. Um, so, if you don't, if we can't get unanimous agreement, then the cost of the bond will go up, um, $1.74 million, because we will be forced to go through the New York State Dormitory Authority, sometimes referred to as DASNY, and school districts will have less control, and the financing options for districts are more limited. This just lists the 13 component school districts, and, um, also shows the difference. So, if we have the intermunicipal agreement, and you're looking at D, the, the blue circle here, it will be a $36 million project, just as I've said to you. If, however, you go over to DASNY, and we have to finance it that way, the $36 million number runs up to 38, and the, um, shared debt service goes from 56 million to 62 million. So, that's a, an example, and it's all borne out by each individual cost to each individual district.
Could, could you just stop there for a second?
Sure.
For the listening and viewing public, could you explain how each district is assessed the amount?
I think that's why the smart guy is here, and I'm gonna, he's gonna do that after I just do that.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just a, um, figurehead to do the broad strokes, and he'll do the, um...
Opening.
...detour. That's right. So, this gives you an example, using a small District A, what the difference would be in the first, um, 90, $986,000 would be with the intermunicipal agreement, if, if we had it unanimously across the county, and that, without that, it would be $1 million. And for a large district, 7.8 million to 8.2 million. Again, this is Hyde Park, so for you, with the agreement, your cost would be 3,200, um, without the agreement, it would be 3,300. Um, I think it's almost time for you, right? Yes. So, I'll turn the clicker over to Jason. Would you like me to help pass it out?
Sure.
I know you're paperless, but this is kinda hard to give.
They're used to it, they know, we like to bring paper sometimes, so...
We're used to his pronouns.
Okay, as, as Richard hands those out, good evening, everyone, good to see you again, congratulations on the positive vote last week, although there's a lot of hard work that went into that, so, but, you know, as you're all aware, it's kinda, you know, as soon as one thing finishes, you're on to the next thing, right? So, that's why we're here tonight to talk about the Duchess DUCY's project, so, um, the document that Richard's passing out, we'll kinda go through a couple, a couple pieces, um, I'll get to Doug's question in a minute, um, but essentially, what we really wanted to illustrate with this example is, um, the importance of, um, signing the intermunicipal agreement and going that option versus, um, having to go through DASNY, because not only is there the higher project cost if you go through DASNY, because of all the extra financing that was already mentioned, but you also lose a lot of flexibility that you would have as a district in terms of determining how you wanna pay your, uh, your component share back. So, if you, if we have to go through DASNY, then there will just be one, um, bond for the, that the DUCY's will issue, and you'll be given your share, then that's the payback schedule. So, if you have cash to pay, or if you wanted to try to pay it off shorter, that, that's not an option, you have to just go with the term that's set up through the, um, overall project borrowing versus what we'll show you tonight, or a couple samples of what we've seen, you know, we've worked with some other DUCY's across the state over the past couple of years on their projects, and just some options that we've seen that have worked for, um, different districts, depending on where you are at financially. Uh, but, on the first page, just as a summary, how we get to your component shares, so the 3.2 million that Richard was mentioning earlier, uh, we take the 36.8 million total project cost, assuming the intermunicipal agreement, and basically, we take the, the ARWADA, which is the resident weighted, um, average daily attendance, so we take that statistic for each of the component districts, each of your 13 components that you're in this, um, DUCY's group with, and then we allocate based on that a percentage of the total project cost that would be assigned to you, and that's set as part of the initial intermunicipal agreement, that's not revisited each year, just so that everybody has some, you know, cost certainty when it starts in that agreement. So, we kinda take the snapshot in time today of where everybody stands, and that's what the costs are broken down by. So, you can see, um, we've highlighted on this first page specifically for, uh, you, Hyde Park, uh, you're about 8.72% of the overall, so that's how you get the 3.2 million out of the 36.8 million total project cost. Okay?
Okay.
So, then, as I mentioned, uh, just to give you a couple examples of how you could pay that 3.2 million back, I guess, before I get into these examples, just, um, 'cause I know you're all very familiar with the, you know, how a local capital project works, right? But a DUCY's project, it's very different than that. Um, basically, instead of the aid being paid back on a 15-year amortization, no matter what, regardless of how you structure your debt, they pay it back based on whatever you pay. So, if you pay it, you know, your three payments that you're gonna owe to the DUCY's, if you pay those three payments in cash, then they'll just pay you back your, uh, aid ratio on that full share of cash payment at the end of that year. So, you can get it back a little quicker, so you, you actually have some options to play with, versus a capital project, you're usually gonna just see, everybody's gonna go... everybody's going to go with that 15-year term to match to the aid. So, tonight, we have, you know, you have any number of options you could do, but tonight, we're just going to give you kind of three as an illustrative example. So this first option, page two of the handout, I should mention, because I don't think we got into it necessarily, but the way this would be structured is that, you know, as the project goes on, there would be kind of intermittent payments to the BOSI's to help them finance for the cost of construction. So essentially, the current tentative plan is that there would be three sets of payments each July during the span of the project. So this first option shows what would happen if you paid straight cash for all three of your payment options. So, in the first year, you'd pay $392,000 of cash, and the second year and third year, it's slightly bigger, as you get really into the meat of the construction, and there's more cash flow needs. So you see in column A, you're paying cash, and then in column E, you get the aid ratio back on that, and your component share at the end is broken out there in the far right-hand corner, column F. So in total, it comes down to about $1.6 million. But you can see, it's kind of a little bit, you know, uneven, as far as it's not as smooth as we would normally have in a regular capital project, just based on the size of the payments you're making and when. But that's a great option for districts that are, that might be flush with cash, you're trying to figure out something to do if your reserves are pretty well funded. So it's nice to have that option if you do have that situation. The second option would be a similar scenario, but in this case, you would basically borrow on notes for each of those years. So that way, you don't have to upfront the money in July in cash, and then be kind of floating that all year until your aid comes in at the end of the year. You can be on notes during the year, and then when the aid comes in at the end of the year, you use that to help pay down the note, and therefore, pay it off a little bit quicker. So again, there's, in this scenario, kind of focus on columns B and C is where the principal and interest on the notes would be, coming to a total debt service in column D. So you see, it's, you know, slightly higher than if you just paid cash, because now you've got some interest costs associated, so you're paying about $145,000 in interest, but you do get some aid back on that. And at the end of the day, your component share looks very similar to the cash option, just slightly higher because of the interest payments. And then, in the last scenario, we say, okay, now, let's say, you can't afford to have those, you know, spikes in any given year. What if you wanted to kind of smooth this out and really kind of stretch it out more like a traditional capital project? So in this scenario, we just assumed a 20-year bond, just as a benchmark to use. So again, we're paying back principal and interest. So in column B, you can see your share of $3.2 million being paid back over the 20 years in principal. There's interest expense associated with that coming to a total debt service. And then after you get your aid, your component share works out to about $120,000 a year. So now you see, it's a lower annual cost, but a higher overall cost, but you've also gotten some more cost certainty year to year, where you're kind of, you know, smoothing that. So that's another option for people who don't want to have, if you don't have the cash available, but you want to have a smoother impact on your budget, that's another way you could go. And again, you could go any amount in between there, if you want a bond for 10 years, if you want to roll notes for five years. There's all kinds of options that you can look at, but that's only if you sign the IMA, keep that flexibility. Any questions?
I have one.
Mm-hmm.
So you mentioned the three-year plan of a July payment. So if we're interested in the three-year July payment, but if we wanted to utilize, so let's say, there was a payment due this July.
Mm-hmm.
But if we wanted to utilize fund balance from this year as a means of saying, okay, well, you know, instead of having the fund balance, go to, instead of having the cash at the end of the year, go to fund balance, is there a way to utilize that?
Yep. Yeah, well, we've seen work in the past. I mean, you can confirm with your auditor to make sure that they would be okay with this, but because, you know, so I believe the timeline is a December vote, right, is what we're looking at? So if there was a positive vote in December for this project to move forward, there's, now you have an authority where this project is happening, and you have a commitment to the BOSI's for these, this $3.2 million. So what we've seen some auditors allow in the past is that if you get to the end of that first June, and your payment's not until July technically, so you can't get it on the books, you can move money to the capital fund, since you have a live project that you owe money to the BOSI's for, and then pay it out of the capital fund in July. That way, it gets it out of your general fund balance, if you're trying to stay at like the 4% and not...
Right. And do we need, do we need to vote on that in May? Do we need authorization to move that to the capital project for BOSI's?
I don't believe so. I think you can do it via board resolution.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Similar to like, if you, at the end of the year, if you had excess fund balance, and you wanted to pay down, you know, contribute cash to downsize your bonds on your own project, that can be done via board resolution. So this would be the same kind of idea.
Thank you.
Yep.
In that example, if the vote were positive in December '18, that we're coming up to, that first payment, Greer, would not be that, wouldn't be that quick.
Right.
Because we're going to go through exactly what you're going through, which means we have to finish the design and all of that. So...
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, so the tentative schedule right now, it's still being advanced, but it'd be July of 2020 would be the first payment.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask you a question.
Yep.
So, it's really just a continuation of Greer's question. If the project is approved, and even though the payment isn't due for a few years, could we move some money into the capital project fund one year, and then more the next year?
Right. So like, since the first payment's not until July of 2020, could you move some in the '18, '19 year, even though it's still almost over a year off? Again, you might want to just confirm with your auditor, but we've seen other districts do that on other projects in the past that we've worked with, so I would think the answer would be yes, that as soon as you have that positive vote, you have an obligation. So you have a live capital project that you have a $3.2 million share of, so you can start moving money over at any time to the capital fund to fund that.
Thank you. We're not quite done. I know you have a lot, but we're going to finish quickly here. So, just to let you know, that legally, a BOSI's capital project can be excluded from a district tax cap, but unfortunately, our legislators and our executive have not yet written the regulations and procedures to make that happen. I want you to know that the DSs, as you can imagine, district superintendents are working on this. I have a meeting with legislators on the 6th, and our local legislators are quite aware of this discrepancy. So it could very well happen that by 2020, we have that regulation all fleshed out.
Dr. Hulley, I would also add that the New York State School Facilities Association is also working on that same agenda, in terms of getting that legislation enacted.
So that will be a good thing. So just so you know, this is our plan. December 11th, 2018, is our vote, from noon till 8:00 PM. We will have a voting location in every school district, including Hyde Park, and we're working with your clerks to make a determination of where that will be, at your convenience, wherever you'd like it. And we will also have a voting location at BOSI's. It is based on a simple majority. We're not going to do voting districts within the county. It's just going to be one giant district. And to vote in a school election, as I know you know, you don't have to be a registered voter. Rather, you have to be a qualified voter, which is a U.S. citizen who has lived in Dutchess BOSI's catchment area for 30 days and is at least 18 years of age. And voters, because we don't have the money to rent the machines and do all the things that you generally do, we will have wooden boxes and paper ballots, but when you come to vote, you will sign your name and give us your address. Print your name, give us your address, and sign, and that will be our way of managing that. And so the BOSI's vision is really service solutions and savings, and just to recap, meeting academic and program needs, supporting specialized and individualized instruction, eliminating increased rental costs, and improving safety and security while we invest in infrastructure improvements. We are so grateful for your time, and I'm sorry this took so long. We will be sharing with the district superintendents tomorrow, the draft intergovernmental agreements, and there are three. And we'll talk about that at the meeting tomorrow, and then Greer can bring that back to you. And we're hoping to have everyone sign off on that during the months of May and June, so that by July, we can start calculating. Because if we don't get the intermunicipal agreement, the vote number will be different. So we have to have this all done by July, so we can start calculating what the vote will be. All right? Any questions for me?
Joel?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Thank you kindly.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks, Jason and Sherry.
Right. Should I so say, Perry is serving on our facilities committee, which is helping to guide this project through. They've looked at the PowerPoint and made good suggestions about how we should limit it, ala some of the good use you make of PowerPoints at Hyde Park. So we tried to take some good advice from them.
Six slides, six bolts.
Full disclosure.
If you're on, it can't fail.
Well, I will say, you know, I'm never going to miss an opportunity to plug this.
Yeah, I guess so.
I think that our BOSI's program in Dutchess County is vastly underutilized, underestimated as to what the potential is. I think there's a fantastic opportunity for the county, the residents of the county, to get behind it.
Absolutely.
And recognize that there's an investment that needs to be made here for the future. And I think that one of the challenges that is out there is the fact that BOSI's doesn't, you know, if the conditions, and I don't want to go overboard on this, but when you think that we have students who are going to school in an industrial park, a business park, if we had, if we had, and I say "our students," they are our students, if we had all of those students that were Hyde Park residents going to that facility, we would have done something a long time ago. It just, the problem is, it's just spread out, and it's too invisible to a lot of people. Most people don't recognize what it is. Back when I worked for a manufacturing facility, we looked at that building and decided it wasn't appropriate for us to move manufacturing into. So, you know, this is something that's got, it's not even a choice. This has got to happen. We've got to make this happen. People have got to recognize that if we're going to move forward, and it was that the 2030 was a great eye-opener for me, and I'm re-energized that we've, you know, education in Dutchess County for the foreseeable future needs a good shot in the arm, and it's time to do it.
Bill Daggett's amazing.
Yep. Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Safe drive, especially Jason.
Okay. At this time, may I have a motion to enter public participation, please?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
We got both, Dan and Dan.
One favor. If anybody would like to address the board, please tap the mic and just tell us who you are.
Good evening. I am Heidi Nacazza. Do I need to say my address?
No, that's fine. Just, your name's good.
Okay. So, I'm actually very saddened that this is even an issue that I need to bring to light, but I feel like everyone needs to know what happened. I'm going to give you the short version of what has happened. My son, Colton, is in the third grade at North Park Elementary. I attempted to opt him out of the MAPS test for medical reasons. This school year, my son was diagnosed with a brain tumor. He had surgery and radiation. He's back in school, but he's still in recovery. I was told that it was illegal for him or anyone else not to take the MAPS test. I emailed Ms. Kafka, and she said she would need to check with legal about this. So more importance was placed on taking the test than Colton's individual situation. It concerns me that Ms. Kafka was not able to make this decision on her own, that she needed to consult legal about a matter like this. She was given two sets of facts, Colton's 504, which now I know doesn't cover MAPS, and the second one, that Colton was still recovering from a brain tumor, surgery, and radiation treatment. She was given this information when I was requesting that him not take the MAPS test. Ms. Kafka needed to consult legal on this matter, which she did, and then she gave the directive for Colton to sit and stare. Now, she may not have said those exact words, but Colton was made to sit and stare with a computer placed in front of him, with the test logged in. No accommodations are to be made for test refusals. No books were allowed, even though other students were allowed books when they were done. He had to sit until the last tester was finished. This wasn't a mistake made by a first-year principal. This was a choice and a directive given by a seasoned professional. It's concerning that this much precedent was placed on the MAPS test. I don't know if you guys are familiar with the MAPS test, but it definitely, this should not have happened for the MAPS test. Colton was caused so much undue stress, and it broke my heart to see how this choice affected him. Would anything come out of me telling you all this? I don't know, but I felt that you all needed to know that this happened. Also, I have yet to get a response to an email requesting legal proof that MAPS cannot be opted out of. I requested this a week ago. I have not gotten any response for that request. I'm very shocked and disappointed, to say the least, with how this was all handled. Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the board?
Hi, everybody. My name's Jennifer Morris. I need to be very clear that I'm here tonight as the parent of three children in the district. I do want to just say one thing before I start, and what I had planned to say, is that I have to say I'm really, really so very disappointed in the decision about Planned Parenthood FDR, that my children are not going to benefit from those guest speakers. I think it's really the wrong decision, but that's not my main purpose for being here. I have three girls in the district, one at North Park, one at Haviland, one at FDR, and CTI, by the way, which is a great program. I wanted to first say something positive, and I wanted to commend Haviland Middle School for taking honor students out of state testing and offering instead to provide them with much-needed extra review and practice for the Regents' exam that they'll be taking this year. Tests which they are tested on content, obviously, and skills that they haven't actually been taught, that they have, that sounded wrong, have actually been taught and count toward graduation requirements. However, in these final precious few days we have at the high school to educate the students, or for our students to be educated, MAPS testing is in full swing, once again, at all levels in our district. And I am once again extremely frustrated with the district's decision to pay for, administer, and attempt to require these MAPS tests of all students in grades K through 10. These testers are just another example of unnecessary testing that take my children out of valuable instructional time. They are not part of the curriculum. They are not teacher-created, and they do not test my children on the content covered in the curriculum. The results are inaccurate at best, and should not be used to place my children in honors or AIS classes. I have absolute faith that my children's very capable instructors can determine their capabilities and their future placement without MAPS results. It is for these reasons and so many others that my children have refused these tests for years. Every year, I do get a letter from the district telling me that my children can't refuse MAPS tests. This is simply not true. Under the U.S. Constitution's 14th Amendment, I, as a parent, have the right to nurture, raise, and direct the education of my child. The Supreme Court has continuously upheld the principle that parents have the fundamental right to direct the education and upbringing of their children. In addition, it is against the American Psychological Association Code of Ethics to subject children to testing against their will. If the district attempts to test a child over an objection, a complaint can be filed with the APA Ethics Committee. Nothing supersedes parental rights. This idea that parents cannot refuse MAPS testing is simply false, and is nothing more than scare tactics. Parents need to be made aware of their rights, and the district needs to reevaluate the efficacy of these tests. I, for one, will continue to exercise my parental rights in this matter, and my children will not be taking MAPS again this year. I do have a few requests regarding this. I would like to know what it costs the district, and therefore, the taxpayers of Hyde Park, to administer these tests twice a year. I believe it's an expense that we could easily do without, and the money could be used much more appropriately to fund programs that actually serve to educate our students. Furthermore, I'd like to see proof of the accuracy of these tests, as well as proof that the results of these tests are being used to improve academic results overall in the district. It is my sincere hope that the Board of Ed and the district will take another look at our testing policy regarding MAPS, and do what's right and do what's best for our children. Keep the tests limited to those that are teacher-created, curriculum-based, and required for graduation. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the board? Are all back from, I would say back from the day, but that wouldn't sound right.
I'm Doug Eckman. A number of you know me. I'm not planning to come to every board meeting the way I did three years ago. However, I am a taxpayer in Hyde Park. I own a house. Taxes are going up. Your enrollment in Hyde Park, if I'm correct, is slowly going down. Is that right?
That's correct.
Your expenses are going up. The taxpayers don't appreciate that. I don't appreciate The taxpayers don't appreciate that, I don't appreciate it. You are in a tough position, but you've got to do something to stop the expenses going up.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the board? Okay, may I have a motion to return to open session, please?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, I guess I really only feel qualified to say one thing on the first thing. We were informed of the thing. What happened, as near as I can tell, was a mistake, and I think we've acknowledged that, but I will let the superintendent.
Yeah, again, we are deeply sorry. And I did meet with Heidi for about an hour on Friday and about an hour and a half today. We're going to schedule a meeting to sit down and have a conversation with Aviva as well. And yes, with your son's condition, we, there was an error in foreseeing the issue of him taking the assessment.
Anybody want to comment on the cost of the MAPS?
Not at this time, I mean, we don't have it right in front of us, we don't have it at our fingertips. The MAPS assessment is a diagnostic assessment that the district has selected for a number of reasons. We will get the information that Jen has requested, Mrs. Morris has requested. I will say that a number of our teachers, especially at the elementary level, absolutely use the diagnostic assessment to inform them of exactly where their students are coming into the year, and it also identifies tragedy, strategies, it's been a long day, for them to work on. So we use it for diagnostic purposes. We do not use it as a single point of judgment on a student, either to determine honors or AIS, it's one piece of information. You are correct in that a student can, at any point, for anything that any teacher puts in front of them, not do the work. That happens for any number of things. We try not to put students in between their parents. Teachers give assessments to students all the time. And again, we would never physically take a student's hand and force them to take a test. As far as the cost, proof, and constitution, we'll need to get back to you. We do, I also do want to say that we did ask our attorney for an opinion on the MAPS, and it remains what it has. We don't have it in writing, we're anticipating that we'll get it tomorrow. And what we've been verbally told by the attorney is that by virtue of sending your students to public school, it's not a menu. You don't get to pick and choose which part of the curriculum and the assessment that you determine you want. So we will get that legal answer, and we will share that. You raised other issues that might be constitutional. We haven't asked constitutionally. I do know that from a state education perspective, as far as the curriculum, there are regulations, and there is an empowerment of a school district to select the curriculum and the assessments. And the only instance where the state education department has regulation for determination not to participate are with the dissection of animals and with the AIDS curriculum. But you've asked specifically where it lies in the constitution. We will get that, and I think that's it. We'll get the other information.
Okay.
Greer, if I could suggest that when this information is gathered, it be done as a presentation, again, in the public board meeting, since these issues have been raised publicly, and the audience that are going to hear these questions far outweighs the people that are sitting here today, we have an obligation to make sure that they all get the correct information.
Great idea. I think I have an obligation to weigh in on the student perspective of MAPS testing. To be completely honest, in high school, we don't really take them. We kind of sit there and click the buttons randomly to get back to class. So, that is the student perspective on the diagnostic exam.
Thank you, Leah, and I believe we did determine, yeah.
I have to say, so somebody was clicking the right answers because your overall scores were outstanding at FDR on the MAPS.
Yeah.
So I just have to point that out.
Yeah, and we have, Leah, we have actually had a dialogue last year and this year about the utilization of MAPS at the high school, because we do have other assessments. So I guess we got some good results this year, but we did have a healthy conversation last year about whether or not we would continue the MAPS in ninth and 10th grade, again, because by that time we have some other diagnostic information. So we've been kicking around the idea, based on teacher and student feedback, that perhaps at the high school level, we use the MAPS for students that we know are struggling and in AIS classes, so that we can monitor. So we have heard the student feedback and the teacher feedback at the high school level. Again, at the elementary level, what we know is that the staff uses them for diagnostic purposes. They look at, so if you're in front of a class of 23 or 24, 27 children, and the students sit for the MAPS assessment at the beginning of the year, within 24 hours, they have the results. So we don't, we don't take assessment lightly. We didn't make the selection lightly. Again, we are looking at the high school piece. I just want to say that for the listening audience today, the MAPS assessment is from the Northwest Educational Agency. They've been in existence for well over 30 years. They are a nonprofit. They never wanted to be in this mix of the assessment wars. They are on the state-approved list, we have to use one assessment. In order to use teacher-created assessments, we would need to invite in a whole lot of teachers for most of the summer to design a valid, statistically valid and reliable assessment, which is the only thing the state assessment, the State Department will accept. So it's not as easy as saying a teacher-created test, it has to be a teacher-created test that adheres to the standards of validity and reliability. And again, I know that in the era of testing, MAPS has a, has a, become a bad name, but it is a diagnostic assessment, and it is from a research-based company, so I just thought I'd put that in, but we can include that in our presentation as well. And thank you for the feedback at the high school level.
Yeah, you know, I feel like I have to say something, because I think the presentation would be largely about MAPS in general, uses of MAPS, and some of the legal things that were brought up. And I haven't had a chance to meet with Heidi yet, I know that that's going to be scheduled. I wasn't, you know, a part of the original meeting, and that wasn't my decision. You know, I need to just say that I'm really sorry he had a terrible experience. And I just have to, you know, just say a couple of things for clarity, you know, that you might not even know because we haven't had a chance to meet, which is that, you know, I got a particular request on May 16th, and it was only the legal question of, does a student with a 504 plan, are they able to opt out of the MAPS? And I got the legal opinion, I thought I knew the answer, I got it, it was yes, they, you know, they do need to take the test. And the question of a medical possibility only came up later in that day, and then I asked if Dr. Rycheck could weigh in on a medical exemption, I'm really not, you know, she would need to do that, which she did, within 24 hours, by the 17th, that decision was made. And unfortunately, I got the request on the first day of the testing. So, you know, I just need to say that. So it was not, you know, I, you know, I am upset for you and for me, because I care about your kids and I've known you for years, and so I'm upset too, and I really did not have all of that information on May 16th or 17th.
Okay.
And I don't lie. That's all I just need to say. Thank you. No.
I've been sympathetic with parents who opt out for years. I'm not a strong believer in standardized testing when the point of the standardized testing is to inform the school, or the state, on the ability of a school to teach the students. Particularly, New York State has given inconsistently difficult tests, there's some notorious examples, and I think that politicians were interfering too much in what schools were doing. Having said that, I don't consider the MAP to be a standardized test of the same caliber. I think that it's much more accurate and scientific and based on research than any standardized test that I'm aware of. And I also think that because it's diagnostic in nature, while not directly related to the student's grade, it could be used to help the student. It could be used as another tool in the belt holster of the teacher, so to speak. So I see no reason to continue to use the MAP test. And from what I can see, research has not shown that it is inaccurate, and that I do not see any evidence that it costs too much time in the classes to conduct it.
Okay, any other comments? Let's move to the board subcommittee reports. We had an informal via email policy meeting to finish up the last policies we needed for this meeting, for the code of conduct. Any other, were there any other meetings? Okay, that's all there. Brings us to the board discussion on the PE exemption program. And if I remember right, I was the one that recommended we keep it as it is, because I thought Tom didn't have a, since it wasn't his program, he didn't design it, he didn't have enough of his own skin in the game, shall we say, to move on to the next level where we include 11th grader. If that has changed, Tom, I will be happy to change my vote, but I still think we don't know enough yet, and I would like to see it one more year and then make a decision. So that's, now anybody else wants to say whatever they want to say. I know Denise was very in favor of moving on to 11th grade, and somebody else.
I was also.
And Nick, so, you know, like I said, I am only one vote, but I've given you my opinion.
I would just be curious, I mean, is there, you know, can anybody offer any comment on success or more problems with it?
Well, there were very few students.
Okay, so maybe that's the first thing, how many students, how many students took advantage of it?
We had about four students take advantage of it, but what happened was it, we uncovered a couple of things that we planned to remedy. One was that we learned at the last board meeting through Leah that somehow the students were told that they couldn't, and it was only available to seniors, that they couldn't participate in the badminton tournament if they opted out of the phys ed classes.
That's a big thing.
And it is a big thing. It's a cultural, traditional event that happens the day before winter break, and it's something that unites the school and draws in most, if not all, of the senior class. So we believe that there was a low participation, one, because of that, two, because for, we not, we didn't feel we got the word out enough, three, a bunch of the students at the upper end of the class don't want to participate because they get a grade for gym and it helps their average. And the last one was, in order to be exempt from PE class, you still had to go to PE class for attendance. So in order to get to that study hall, you had to go to the phys ed class, get your attendance taken, go to study hall, so there was some running around to do that we think we may be able to handle electronically. So I know from speaking to Tom, the reason for, and the reason for the phase-in was so that we would have a sample size to see structurally how it would work. And what we learned at the end of the year was that we didn't have a big enough sample size to have any idea what it would be like if 50 or 60 students participated out of the class, and that there were some roadblocks. Some students might not have been aware of the option, and there were some roadblocks for others. So I think, I'll paraphrase for Tom, he didn't feel that the sample size was enough to get a good handle on it. Again, whatever direction the board goes, we'll support, but. And then it was also brought up, just to make sure we bring up the other point, that it's probably, it might even be more appealing to juniors who have the heaviest course load. And I think that was Denise's point and Jeff's point.
Right, right. Okay, well.
And we could do it again and only have six.
Logistically here, there needs to be four votes in favor of whatever we decide, so if you, the rest of you want something different, I don't know, I'm not sure if we're going to get this resolved tonight.
Well, is it a majority of present, or is it a majority?
Majority of the board.
A majority of the board?
Wait, it has to be? No, it doesn't.
Yes, it does.
For this?
Why would this require, I mean, the majority of the present, of those present is typically all it takes for a motion to pass.
Yeah.
For a program change? That would be my take.
No, I don't.
If it's just the majority.
I think it's just the majority.
Like, somebody confirm that, but.
Well, let me ask you, is there a timing, is there a need for a decision to be made tonight?
I don't think so.
Can it be deferred for, until the next meeting?
That would be great.
So why don't we get?
Okay, well, is there any more, is there any, this is a discussion anyway, it's not a vote.
Okay, so we, if we can work with that, so why don't we, let's defer the decision until the next meeting, particularly if we need to get some clarification, and I think we need to get some general clarification. I would have expected it would have been a majority of those present, you know, to vote. A majority of who's here.
Of the people here, yeah.
But that means you could theoretically adopt something with three votes.
Yes.
If it was only four.
And a five-member board, it happens all the time.
Yeah, that's, but that's, that's different.
That's their makeup, yeah.
So I would, I would like to know if that's, I mean, let's sneak something on.
Got to be here to do it.
Like, there's three people who, for business reasons or whatever, can't be here, and after they're out there, I sneak something on to the agenda that I know I can get three votes for. I mean, that doesn't sound right to me, so.
Well, we can check, we can check, there's no.
But let's discuss it.
But I'm going to ask that, we don't, do we need Tom the next time because he's out a bazillion nights a week? I think, I mean, Aviva and I.
That's all right, I just wanted to know if it's still the same opinion. Yeah, okay.
He looks like he's enjoying himself, look at him.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I guess, you know, if you're here, and if you have any thoughts you'd like to share with us, I'd love to hear them.
This'll be the third time.
No, I mean, right now, I mean, if you've got, yeah, if you've got anything that you would, you know, that you think we should know.
I had a chance to look at the presentation, I mean, I just, I really have nothing to add.
Okay.
Pretty much what Doug said was, in career sense.
Okay, okay.
Does anybody else have anything tonight that they want to say about?
Yeah, I just wanted to verify that I heard Greer correctly. So there's a couple of negative consequences of opting out for the current year that may have caused a lot of seniors not to do so. And that was the.
It's a possibility, yeah.
And that was the badminton tournament?
Yep.
And attendance?
Yes.
And so you're planning to fix those two things for next year? And so, you're planning to fix those two things for next year?
Tom's already taken care of the badminton, and it'll be easy enough in this electronic age to figure out a way to flag the kids for attendance.
Okay. But there's no, I mean, the few that did take the option, have, has anybody spoken with them? Did it?
Well, the interesting thing was out of the four, it was one person who opted out of three sports. So, it was really only two students total.
Basically, it was three students total, three in the fall. And then after that, two of whom dropped in through the exemption, the same person did it for winter and spring.
Three total kids.
Three total kids, okay. I had it reversed.
Yeah, so it was the same person each, basically, except for the fall.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have any other comments they want to make? All right, moving on then. May I have a motion for the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much.
That means tenure's official.
All right, yeah. Let me get down to new business. May I have a motion for special education placements, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion there?
I'll review the pack and recommend its adoption as presented.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. May I have a motion for the bid awards for transportation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that one? That's Dan.
Just sleeping on the job.
All in favor?
Uh-oh.
I have a motion for the cheerleaders' overnight field trip.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? I'll just say once again, great documentation.
Excuse me, who moved that one? Okay, thank you.
I know, I spoke so fast that it's hard to recognize the voice, right?
All in favor?
I knew it was that side.
All in favor? Opposed?
Most of the work is done at this end.
And I have a motion for the.
We've got Aviva down here.
May I have a motion for the athletic trainer contract, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion there?
I just had one question. Oh, Tom left already.
Yeah, well, we told him.
Then you didn't need him.
We told him.
I forgot about that. I forgot the question I had when I read the book. Just a verification, that contract for the athletic trainer runs from the first of August through the last day in June, so we do not have any coverage.
10 months.
For July. No, it's 11 months.
I thought, I read it said 10 months.
I think it's from the first of August.
It's August to June.
Because we covered, we covered the tryouts and stuff.
And that's for football.
And July. So, I just want to verify that there's nothing going on of any responsibility for the school district to the month of July that might be jeopardized by this. I don't know of any.
I don't know of any.
I can't think of any.
But the question did come to my mind.
Okay.
Because I'd have one question every board meeting, so this was.
All right. Okay.
Just one?
Well, we've had the thing in second. All in favor? Opposed? Anybody? Okay. May I have a motion for the inter-municipal agreement with the town of Hyde Park for the use of the gas station there?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
10 months.
May I have a motion to accept the Title IX appeal ruling?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Now, we're back to, may I have a motion to enter public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor? Opposed? If anybody would like to speak again, here we can, then, fill in the board.
I'm not sure why Aviva had said, "I'm not a liar." If it was because when she said I didn't have that information on the 16th, I held up my papers because I have an email that I sent her the morning of the 16th, reminding her, right here in my email, that my son had a brain tumor, surgery, radiation, et cetera. I do not want him taking this test. And I also asked her to check about the 504. She responded to those emails, so I'm not calling her a liar, but she did say she didn't have that information on the 16th, and she did have the information. And she responded two times to my email, and then she made her decision. So, she did have that information. I just want to clarify that. And she's not a liar. Maybe she just forgot. Thank you.
Okay. Would anybody else like to, Margaret?
Margaret Katani. I've been in the district for about 32 years, and I wasn't planning on speaking, but I just find myself sitting there thinking, what's going on? That a third-grade child had to endure what they did, and when the questions were asked, "legal" is the word I keep hearing. I know that the Board of Ed works hard, and I know that you're looking at it from a different lens, but my heart is broken right now. 32 years, and this is the first time I can say, I'm sad to say I'm associated with this district, not because of testing, but because a third-grade child who has gone through unbelievable things, we couldn't see past that. And I know there are really good people sitting here. I'm heartbroken. A MAPS test over a child who has been through what this child has been through, and he was made to sit and stare? There's no excuse. There were human beings in that room. And we need to seriously look at ourselves. What are we doing? We are educators. We are not lawyers. And I don't really care what the legal jargon is. That child should not have been put through what he was put through. It's really a sad day, and we need to figure out why we felt that needed to happen. And I appreciate the apologies, but not okay.
Anybody else like to address the board? May I have a motion to return to public session, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Yeah, I, I've been sitting here and I'm listening to this. Oh, discussion on the vote? Yes, no, sorry.
Okay. All in favor?
All right.
Opposed now? Perry? What do you got to say?
I just, I appreciate people being here and making comment, but when someone, when you're sitting on this side of the table, and when you're running a district and you're going through all the steps, legal is something that we do a lot of because we have to. We work with a lot of regulations. We work within those regulations, and people are more than happy to jam it down our throats when, when we don't do something legally correct. So, we use that as a resource. And I think that apology's been made. And, you know, I feel really bad. You know, I'm thinking about, you know, a third grader, you know, obviously with, with medical issues that, it certainly was a horrible thing that happened, but we got to move on from it. And I don't know what it's going to take, but we got to move on from it. I mean, people, there's been discussion, there's a willingness to have more discussion, but I guess that's all I got to say, is enough is enough. I think it's, you know, it's, let's, let's work through it, but, you know, being horrified, you know, it's, it's a bad thing, but time to move on. I think everybody learns from it.
So, I think something that doesn't happen very often, certainly from my perspective, is that I don't, I don't express how, how badly I feel when something bad happens, when a mistake is made, when a child has a, is poorly treated. I don't talk about it. I don't talk about how I feel. But in this case, and the other thing that happens is that I don't feel comfortable talking about a specific child in public like this. And that's why I chose not to talk about it before. I feel terribly for this child and for this family. I can emphasize. I also frankly feel sorry for Aviva. I've worked with her for 10 years now, and I know how hard she tries to get things right. And I've seen how she reacts emotionally when a decision she makes goes wrong. I am firmly in belief that there were communications issues here that are probably at the core of this, this misunderstanding. It's horrible that it happened. It's horrible for everybody, but I think that it's counterproductive to talk about it in public anymore. Again, I'm not comfortable having this kind of conversation in public, and I suspect that the rest of the board and the administrators are feeling the same way.
Thank you, Heidi. And while, and I did pull it up, so I want to set the record straight. So, no, I'm not a liar, but yes, I did forget that was in the email, though at the time I did read it, and I was aware of the medical condition because I had worked with you earlier in the year. My understanding is that, that it wasn't current. Again, had received no new medical documentation and still asked the legal question at the time, even given 504 accommodations and the plan, and it wasn't in the plan. But obviously, the right choice was made within 24 hours to do a medical exemption regardless of the legal opinion, and I'm really sorry it happened. And again, it was, I agree with Steve that there were communication issues, and that's been investigated this week by Dr. Rycheck, and we're looking at every aspect of that, from building to district office and all of that, so that this doesn't happen again to your child or to anyone else's child. So, you know, I apologize for my part in that. And again, I, you know, and for, and for being defensive because it did feel like my 17 years were, you know, of being honest and working hard for kids was being, you know, attacked. So, that's hard. So, you know, but that doesn't take away then that I was part of this.
I've kept my feeling quiet for this discussion, but I, I'm at the point where I have to say, I'm disappointed in the school district for a simple reason, that the golden rule I lived by didn't occur and didn't get followed through somewhere down the line by just one person, that's all it would have taken, for somebody to do the right thing. And I wonder if there's a cultural issue in the district or a concern that prevented somebody from stepping up and saying, this isn't right. I'll take responsibility. We're doing the right thing.
Dan, that did happen within 24 hours.
Understand, but that didn't, that didn't prevent the harm that occurred at that thing. I mean, people looking at a student, looking at a screen, I mean, if, leading up to that, it didn't become obvious. I think it should have been very obvious at the time, from the description I'm hearing of what the child was doing, that at that point, somebody needed to step in. I mean, we've gone through issues and issues and issues in the state. We've written laws to hold blameless people that stepped forward to do the right thing, assisting somebody in a medical crisis that's not a doctor, and understanding that this is a medical issue, somebody had to step forward and do something, and legally preventing anything from being held against that student if the person did it. I mean, this kind of thing shouldn't be a legal issue. It should be just a moral gut feeling for the people that says, this district believes in doing the right thing, and whether or not I'm going against a rule or S E D, and I would hate to have somebody pull up all of the footages that I've had on the last 17 years where I pointed to the S E D and wriggled my nose or flashed my, my signal about the crap that they've thrown at us. But this was a case where somebody needed to step forward, and I'm sorry that nobody did. I apologize for myself as a member of the board that this didn't happen.
Any other discussion? Thank you. There are no other matters that I know of, other matters deemed necessary. Anybody have anything? I have need for, and I'll guarantee you can put me on a timer, a 10-minute exact session. So, at this time, I would like a motion to enter executive session, please. Let's go, guys.
So moved.
10 minutes, come on, you can spare 10 minutes.
Nine.
Nine minutes, okay. You got it.
I need a second.
All right.
Need to vote.
I know. Yeah. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. We're now in executive session, and it will be short. To discuss a matter with the superintendent's contract.